And Chris, I had a question just about streaming. So now that we're back with the original sort of regs in place with regards to meeting laws, is this live streamed as well?
I'm going to tonight just to play it safe to cover all of our bases because it was in the announcement. So but I don't think it's required at the moment, but just to cover all of our bases and because it was in the announcement, I'm going to it tonight.
Okay. All right. So that 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 makes sense. And so we are live streaming in front of thousands of viewers tonight. Thanks for making time in July. I know like things get busy and it's warm outside. It's light outside. And so hunkering down and talking shop about school can be a lot, but it's important. And we've got a lot to kind of talk through as we just completed another very different school year at Unity. So mission moment wise tonight, I'm going to share my screen. I want to talk about one of our initiatives this summer that is exciting. And aligns obviously with our mission as the mission moment. So we are, we have been engaging in expanded summer enrichment over the past few weeks and that will continue over the month, months of July and August. Facts here include the following. Right now, we've, our students have experienced learning from home for the past 16 months. So with that, they've been home isolated, haven't been out all that much. Very different and challenging. As a school, we pride ourselves on exposing our kids to new experiences. So the past year and a half hasn't offered or afforded that as much. And so for us, want to do that more so this summer is important. In addition to that, we also pride ourselves on developing and building strong and trusting relationships with our kids. We feel like with that sort of vibe, with that sort of connection, learning is most powerful. And so for us this summer, we're engaging in a whole host of new experiences that we feel expose kids to new things as well as build relationships with our educators, as many of our educators are facilitating these experiences, including our very own here, Chris Doscher. So as we think about returning to school in a positive and strong way, these experiences, I think, matter a great deal in connecting adults with kids. Essentially, we're going to have four grades at our school next year in which kids haven't had all that much time with teachers in person. So it's a big deal. So this summer, we're offering 18 different enrichment experiences. Over 100 kids are taking part in them and all of them are facilitated by either teams of teachers or individual teachers. And so again, for us, this bodes well for coming back to school, school strongly and kids being fired up and and eager to see familiar faces. So I just want to highlight a couple of clubs with some photos and and have you smile at what you're seeing. So one of the clubs we're offering is just field trips to various museums and parks. And so this is a group of kids who visited PS1 in Mount Island City. I think it was maybe even yesterday or earlier this week. We've got also rock climbing adventures. So I think this was also yesterday, Mr. Pactor, our 10th grade, ninth grade history teacher brought some kids to a rock climbing wall and they were able to experience that for the first time. You'll note the climbing shoes and each of the kids taking part. So they're on top of the world there. We've got a volleyball camp going on. So kids playing volleyball, team sport and other connecting with others. That's at our high school gym. We also have hoops training going on, which is always a favorite. And so you'll see, I think that's Kalu Beckford, our recruitment manager on the left, coaching kids as they plan our middle school gym. And then finally, in our middle school auditorium, we've got Dan's class going on and that's Ali Olivier, our step coach, 12th grade ELA teacher, and she's also coordinating this endeavor this summer. So she's doing a fine job. I think with regard to like the effort, many of our kids are taking part and taking advantage of this. I think just with any sort of additional effort over the summer where it's opt in, like the work is in encouraging kids to be there, fully engage. And so Ali's doing a terrific job of kind of like overseeing that, supervising it, making sure that we've got as many kids taking part as possible. And so feel good about that. Again, I think it's going to bode well for for the return to school in the coming year. So that's the mission moment. I will say this is a bit of a pilot and then I think in seeing how things go this summer, how kids respond, how staff sort of see the series of initiatives, I could see us doing this in future summers. So to be continued.
For how long is it? Does it go, Josh?
It varies. So we opened it up and so for for a couple of them, it's like a few, like, so we've got a group that is conducting nature walks in parks in the city. And that's, there are four different walks at various points in the summer. There are others that are like taking part twice a week over the course of the summer. The camps themselves, I think, are running either one week or two weeks at a time and then switching up. So it really does vary. And I wanted to offer flexibility so that we had as many opportunities for our staff to take part as possible. And so with people traveling and things, if it's too restricted, people may not opt in. So it runs the runs the gamut over the course of the summer. And so kids could keep very busy if they opt into several of them.
And do you also have more traditional sort of summer school for kids who need to catch up on credits and stuff?
Yeah, we do. So and the thing we did is we made sure that any of the offerings we're doing enrichment wise don't overlap with the summer academy day, which is typically eight to two. And so all of these clubs are happening sort of outside of those hours. And so kids who are taking part in summer school and brushing up on skills as they prepare for the next grade can also opt into to the enrichment offerings.
And summer school is also in person or is that Zoom?
Same thing. It's remote. So we're going, it's, it's, the differences are they're smaller group in form. So there's more personalized attention. And it's, it's remote in the same way, just to completely keep things going through the summer and then we jump back to in person come September.
Okay. No, sounds great.
Yeah, yeah, excited about it. And again, I think it's a good program that has promise and that we could continue with in the coming years. So that's the mission moment.
All right. Do you want to go to head of school report, Josh?
Yeah, let's do that. So I've got that in front of me. Should I also have it available? I'm going to highlight a couple of points. There are going to be some things that we touch on over the course of the committee shareouts too. So let me do that. If you've, if you've got it open, great. So I think the first thing I'd say is that right now, our teachers, unless they're taking part in the summer enrichment programs are off. We've got our staff, our 12 month staff, we're now back in session and we're busy sort of planning out for orientation with staff and then students come August and September and then the year. So there's a lot of kind of planning and prep going on among 12 month staff right now. And that's, that's the scene. Moving on to headlines, the first key update from the school leader report, a couple of things worth underlining. First, we did have two graduation ceremonies outdoors and in person at our middle school for our eighth grade and in Williamsburg for our high school, our 12th grade graduates, both really nice affairs, good to connect with some, some kids and the families who we hadn't seen in some time. Even some staff who we haven't connected with regularly and because of the way things have occurred this year. So just felt wholesome. And both days were were sort of like summer hot, right in the sun. So you're kind of baking as you took part in these festivities, but I think everyone was really happy to be out and about and be there. So proud of that. Also proud of the fact that we hustled. We hustled as a 12th grade team in getting all of our kids over the finish line with regard to graduation. And so we had 100% graduation rate overall, about 68 kids in the class of 2021. I was talking to Janet about this on Wednesday. I think as a school, one of our, one of our superpowers is that we're really good in supporting our kids who are most vulnerable or exposed to like perhaps not being successful in school, in this case, graduation. And so of those 68 kids, there may have been a handful who really needed some additional support to get over the edge and accrue the credits, pass classes they needed toward graduation. And I think we did some smart things at the high school. We extended the runway at the end of the year and changed things up for some of our kids. So as of June, we went asynchronous with our kids who we felt like were in good form with regard to meeting the bar with regard to their classes and being ready for the next grade level. And we focused more of our attention on our kids who were struggling, gave them more personalized attention over that month and helped them sort of get by. So that I think was, was one of the reasons that we, we had success. And again, each and every one of our kids in the 12th grade earning their diploma. So we'll talk a bit about college matriculation and where kids are going next year momentarily, but pleased with that. I think the other point I'd make with just headlines is that right now, the, the, there's been active communication with families and it's been ongoing around the messaging about our intention to go full in person as of the fall. And so I'm going to talk a bit about kind of our 10 point plan for returning to school later on in this meeting, but just know that like that communication began in April and has continued regularly since then. And I think at this point in time, I'm feeling pretty good about families also preparing to return in person. I've only had a couple of calls of families who are, who are somewhat concerned with regard to that return. And it should be somewhat concerning because it's such a big change. But overall, I feel good about families also being ready to return. So that's sort of one series of updates. I'm going to move on now to spring priorities. And there's one update there. And this relates to the graduation mark I mentioned a moment ago. The first priority about grades, credit accrual, accrual and recovery was in pink two months ago. It was yellow last month. And I think we ended up with it being green with about 25% of our students now attending summer academy because of needing to brush up on some skills for things they didn't demonstrate in the spring to then feel confident in moving them on to the next grade level. And so that's happening this summer, obviously, but I do feel good about some of the moves we made this spring in ramping up support for those kids who needed it most and having some, many of those kids sort of rise to the challenge. Also within the spring priorities, I'm looking at point five, which was about graduation support and college matriculation. And so just a couple of headlines stat wise here. So I mentioned graduation already. We also had 90% of our, our projected graduates at the time were now graduates, applied to college. And 90%, the same percent, they all were accepted into at least one college, two year, four year. And right now it seems as if we have 81% of those students who have matriculated. So that feels good. That feels strong. That includes vocational training, which I think is, is as powerful as going to a two or four year school in many cases. And so I feel good about those numbers again, given particularly some of the challenges of supporting students in person through college counseling this year, which just wasn't there. And so all of this happening mostly virtually. So I'm proud of my team. Beyond that, we're going to talk about star results when we get to the SLC shareout. We're also going to talk about college matriculation during the shareout with SLC. So I think with that, we'll cover everything else with the subsidy or with the committee shareouts. So I'll stop there.
That sounds good. Just on graduation, how did you, and did you keep the requirements exactly the same as last year? Or did you have to adopt anything due to the fact that this was remote or?
So good question. And the short answer is the same requirements held last year as this year. The requirements over the past two years were different in that the regents requirements, the testing requirements were waived. Last year, we had three or four students who were as of early spring of last year at risk of not graduating because of not passing one of their required regents exams. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head this year for this class, but because regions were waived two years in a row, they're just less relevant. So again, short answer, same requirements as last year. Over the past two years, regions have been waived.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think that's it. We can move on to dashboard stuff. It makes sense. Sure. Okay. So I'm going to just open that up. And I think there are maybe three updates I want to provide here. I'll start off by saying that, you know, so we're beginning to close out the year and for most of the data points and metrics we measure within the dashboard, we've closed them out, but there are still a couple outstanding. So I think what I'd like to do is provide a full closeout next month and then highlight three areas that I think are relevant to our work now at the school for the board. So first table one, I think closing out enrollment ended up being, I think at 533 as of now, on average, I think for financial purposes, it's about 530 and change over the course of the year. And so we were down below budget by a few students this year. This number was consistent, I think, probably from November on, where we were right around 535, 533 over the course of the year. So not a lot of movement. Fairly consistent. Beyond that, I'm going to move on to table seven. And table seven provides recruitment values. This is a, obviously an important part of the year. Here's, here's Trudy. And introduce her to Alex. Hi, Trudy. Oh, Trudy there. Trudy there. She'll chime in. We'll continue on. So with student recruitment, it's a, it's a busy time of the year. It's like now we're in a place where like we've put ourselves out there, we've connected with families, we've had them apply. We've held our lottery. We've then doubled back with families. Many of our families have committed and now it's about, we've had some events in June. And terrible service. Okay. Trudy's having some, some service issues. So we've had a couple of events in June meant to just kind of like connect with incoming families so they know of us as a school in person. We did a couple of events outside at the middle school three weeks ago. And so now it's about kind of keeping families committed, making sure that like the students who've said they're coming to our school are in fact coming to our school. So the numbers here, I think are favorable. What you'll note overall is essentially to be at our target enrollment of 566, we need to enroll 153 students. And right now, based on today's work, we see 155 coming in. Chris, is that an accurate portrayal of how to interpret this?
Yeah, absolutely. Keeping in mind that some students may leave over the summer unexpectedly, but the anticipation is consistent with prior summers.
So this feels good. As you look down the grade levels, you'll see in green, those grade levels in which we're fully kind of like set at our target enrollment or perhaps just beyond. In yellow, you'll see perhaps we're like within five but under. And then in seventh grade, you'll see we're about 10 under what we have the capacity to serve. But we've enrolled, over enrolled in a few other grades to compensate for that. So overall, things feel good. The work that Chris and Kalu and team are doing right now is really around tours of our facility. As I said earlier, four grades of students haven't been in our school all that much, some not at all, a great many, not at all of all. So connecting and having people see our building and see classrooms are things that we're doing this summer. I think we've got a goal of, Chris, what's the percentage of students we'd like to have take part?
I would, I would love to have 100%, but some families are not interested in the tour right now. So we're saying 70%.
So that'd be a good plus for us. And then I think the other thing going on right now is that we're just kind of doubling back and making calls and connecting with every one of our new families to just touch base and ensure that that commitment is there. So those feel good as strategies for the summer and seeing this through. So I'm feeling, as I've said, the past two months cautiously optimistic about where we are now. This would be a great, I feel really good about things in September if this, this holds. Any questions there?
You just mentioned before that there was a few parents that are concerned about in person. Like, do you think that's going to affect those numbers?
It's possible. We've got two in, two listening and sharing sessions tomorrow and Thursday, tomorrow for the middle school, Thursday for the high school. I think we've got 10 to 20 parents RSVP for both of those events. And so I imagine the families that sign up for this may feel more strongly about what we're doing next year in either direction. We'll see. So I'll have better information on Friday around the subset of parents who could take part and opt into these listening and sharing sessions.
Okay, sounds good.
Josh, just a heads up, it looks like over 120 families haven't registered for those two sessions over the next few days.
Oh my gosh. Okay. All right. I was thinking it was nine and 15 yesterday, right?
Yes, I promoted it quite a bit more. Some of those might be duplicates. I haven't filtered it out yet, but 120 responses to the forum. So
In my mind, I was thinking this would be small focus group sessions. I've got to change up the facilitation. Okay, got it. Wow. All right. Noted. Thank you. So that's, that's table seven. That's the update there. Let's go to table nine. And this is just staff recruitment. This is the kind of stuff in July that keeps me up at night. Like having a vacancy at this point in the year. And so as of now, we're in a pretty good place, better than I think in most years in that we've got one ELA vacancy. Unfortunately, this was a vacancy that we thought we had filled that as of last week was now again open. The person decided to take an offer from another school even before joining us officially. So that is something we're working aggressively toward filling over the coming two weeks, I hope. In addition, we've got a history teacher vacancy at the high school. And I think we've, we've had at least three phone calls from candidates this week or scheduled for this week. So I feel good about that right now. And then we've got a reading interventionist position opened up recently because one of our reading interventionists took a high school history job at another school. So we wish her well. And then we're looking to expand this service at our middle school by one. And so there's a vacancy just due to the expansion. So have at least one candidate, I think Chris had a call with today, who seems promising. So we'll move forward with interview there. So that's where things stand there. But I think I'd like to solidify our team with talented folks as soon as possible. And I would have predicted that back in June, I would have predicted the summer that like this, this would happen on at least one occasion. It usually does. So anyway, that's where we are. I guess Jeanette and I talked a bit about on Wednesday the move toward perhaps staffing heavily, knowing this is going to happen. And I think that's something that we're actively looking to do. It is, it is a pretty competitive market right now for, for I think all folks, but teachers too. So with that comes more competition and perhaps less, less people looking for openings and positions.
And Josh, this is, I mean, the problem with stepping heavily is that you might end up overstuffed in the wrong.
You got it. And then we'll talk about that AFC. So yeah, I've got to balance all that.
Are these people who, those were both new hires or one was somebody who was already?
No, the history, the history vacancy is due to a teacher deciding to move on to another school this spring. And so we've known about that for, for a couple of months now, but haven't filled a position yet. And then the ELA teacher vacancy was due to someone who we had hired in June deciding to not then move forward with our, our offer and the agreement that I thought we had had in place. So a little frustrating. And then the reading intervention positions, one's an expanded role. So it's a new one and it's something that we decided on back in June to, to explore. And as I said, the, the second vacancy with the reading interventionist is just that someone who's been with us for some time, who I know is interested in teaching history, began with us teaching history, found a position at a high school nearby. And so we wish it well.
But so it's not a situation where you had people who in the spring told you they were coming back and then changed their mind.
That reading interventionist position with the person left to teach history, I would say that that would be one case of that.
For that one.
Yep. And then the ELA teacher, we had someone who we hadn't yet worked with officially, who had signed on and then after signing on said, actually, I'm not signing on.
Okay.
So again, this, this is, this is the, the, the work that we aggressively pursue. That's all I got. Well, again, we'll close this out officially in August and then look to resetting it, which is always a fun time in August, September for the coming year. So I think, Mario, we're going to move on to strategic planning.
Yep. There are two near term strategic planning initiatives I want to just quickly discuss with you and share out on tonight. Let me share my screen again. And both of these initiatives are meant to kind of proactively address some roadblocks we might face if we aren't doing some of the work upfront. And so one of those roadblocks or one of those things we want to ensure is full engagement or as full as possible engagement and strong kind of attendance from the get go with our families and students. And so it's about how we encourage, engage, connect with families so that we get a strong return in person learning in September. And so I think last month I had presented out to the SLC and then the full board, this, this sort of 10 point plan that you see in front of you. And so we're carrying that out. The updates are simply that we've got these listening sessions going on tomorrow and Thursday to essentially gather input to then inform our planning moving forward. And so questions such as, what are you most excited about? What are you concerned about? What recommendations do you have? What questions do you have? Those will be the sorts of questions that come forward to our families tomorrow for us then to collect. And then from there, the, the point three of this plan is to conduct info sessions, which we'll do in early August, mid-August around based on what we know now with recommendations from cities, CDC, et cetera, based on input from families in July. Here's our plan moving forward for the year with how we ensure the safety of our community in going full on in person as we move into the 21, 22 school year. In between both of those points, points one and three is just point two, which I mentioned earlier, which is like getting people, getting new families into our building and having Kalu and Chris provide tours to families. So they know that we're real and see the space in which their kids will, will come to school in each and every day. So those are the things.
Question about facilities. I, I thought I saw somewhere that PS44 now had pre K3. Is that right?
Chris, can you comment on that? I wasn't aware of that. It's possible. I think they've had that for some time, if that's the case.
Not sure.
So it's not, it's not space that's sort of taken away that would have been available or anything like that?
No, I think, but I think that's a good segue into the second initiative strategically that we're taking part in now to proactively avoid some barriers come, come the fall. So you saw kind of enrollment numbers as of now, we've got a lot of students at our high school and it's, we've got limited space and we've talked about that in past meetings over the past couple of years as we become acquainted with our, our new home at the high school. And so the CDC still has guidelines in effect, recommendations in effect of three feet of social distancing. And there's some leniency there. They want, they're, they're saying going back to school is the priority. And they recommend three feet if you can do it. And if you can't do it, you should make other kinds of arrangements. Masks, testing, other things to ventilation to also ensure as much safety and health, good health as possible. But there's, there's like, that's sort of like what, what the recommendation is as of this week. And, and you know, things may continue to sort of evolve as we, as we get better data on what's going on in New York and elsewhere. But I think in any case, we've talked But I think in any case, we've talked about sort of this, this temporary space. And so for me, the past couple of weeks, there hasn't been too much time developed devoted to this, but there has been some time in, in connecting with the vendor of these temporary spaces, our architect with the filings and DOB approval, and then also our landlord. And so those are sort of coming together now and are still in process, but good, good forward movement being made with being able to secure three additional temporary spaces for the parking lot behind your building and having that for a year so that we're able to spread out a bit more. And do so, again, with the recommendation of the CDC in place, which I think just gives our staff and families some, some comfort. So that's happening. I think the, the challenge right now, if I had to name one, would be there are probably two things kind of keeping me up at night right now in terms of I'd love to sort of like just get this completed. One are those, those remaining vacancies. I'd like to sort of like solve that. And then I'd like to solve something that is somewhat out of my locus of control in that like these temporary spaces, there's a five to 10-week window in which once you gain DOB approval, they're then fabricated, delivered and installed. And so I'm trying to control things so that the window of time that we're experiencing is closer to five than 10 weeks. If it were 10 weeks, it would then be something that we might not see in our space until October, which just means more complexity with the scheduling and such. So I'm trying to avoid that right now. And so that, that's the, the sort of current, current standing of things in proactively trying to address a roadblock that we might see.
What's the date where ideally you would like to have them by?
September 1st.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're pretty close to five. I mean, we're like seven weeks out.
Yeah. I, I will say that the expediter that we've worked with, with the architect has been good in advocating for us as a school so that we're getting responses from the DOB sooner than we typically might if we weren't to school. And so managing that and then managing the vendor to sort of say, okay, how are things going? Can you check in on this? Just nudging consistently is I think going to be our approach. We're also going with a very simple model of portable classrooms. If you go fancy, things can take longer and we don't, we just need basic rooms that are secure, safe, have some windows, are compliant, et cetera. So that's what we're, we're seeking. So in terms of strategy, those are the short-term strategies that my mind's on now as we move into the, the school year. And so I think, Mario, we're, I think we'll just move into committee reports. That makes sense?
Yeah, that does.
Okay. So with committee reports, we'll begin with the AFC and then move on to the DFC, ECPC and SLC. So I think Alex, you get to report out. Leslie used to love this part of the board meeting. She'd jump in and provide an update. You get to now carry the torch. And so I think this is similar to the report out of the AFC during our call. I guess it was yesterday, but can be more truncated for the full board.
Okay. Do you want me to share my screen? Do you have?
I can share. I can share. Actually, why don't I give you co-host privileges and you share and then you've got complete control and power over everything here.
Careful.
All right. Let's see. Alex, there she is. Chris, is it possible that you have co-host privileges here and I do not?
Maybe, I mean, Alex is a co-host.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
So we're looking at what we shared in April and what I'm looking at going forward. A lot of this is in line with where it's been. There are no new surprises with any of the sustainability indicators, the current ratio, days cash on hand has all fluctuated within a little bit, but within reason. Days cash on hand is up a little bit this in May from April. That has to do with the timing of the payments that we're getting from the city. So we're getting an influx of cash, then we're spending it down and then an influx of cash. So you'll see gradual changes of that over time. Enrollment appears to have stayed steady, I think, as Josh mentioned, since about November. So none of that information is new in this report. Total margin is indicating that we are just about break even, which I believe was the intention through the budget. That may change a little bit come the end of the year. Again, this is just May. We have June to close out. And then a debt-to-asset ratio is still strong in all of our indicators. And again, any changes that we've seen in our projections and our actuals seem to be related to the change in enrollment, but that wasn't something that was going to affect the May financials. So this is consistent with what we've seen up through the fiscal year. Working capital ratio remains strong. Total net assets, our debt ratio, repeated again. Our projected days cash on hand, a little bit higher. But again, we'll see slight adjustments. That number does include the PPP. If we remove the PPP, days cash on hand is at about 65. So it's not quite the benchmark at 90 that we'd like, but it fluctuates from month to month. Not really easy to pin down. Balance sheet remains strong. We do have some balances and accounts receivable. Those are attributable to grants that we have applied for. We just have not quite received the funding. And then, Chris, I know that you highlighted this on the finance committee call. So the IY isn't E rate has to do with a vendor that we get deeply discounted software. Is that?
Oh yeah, deeply discounted internet access and IT maintenance.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And again, in looking at the financials over time, none of these numbers have changed significantly. There don't seem to be any remarkable changes in any of the balance sheet accounts month to month. Of note, the accrued interest that we currently have on the balance sheet as it's related to the PPP loan. Once that loan is applied and forgiven, that will be an adjustment. We are hopeful that that will happen before the audit so that we don't have to go out and make any changes after the financial statements have been issued.
Where, where does that stand? I thought we were applying when we last spoke.
Sure. We, I have worked with Chris to do the preliminary calculations and schedules. At this, it just add our, we're sure that Josh are comfortable with the numbers and that we give whatever the supplemental information the bank is requesting. Just for clarification, we, over the 24-week period, we incurred about $3.8 million worth of payroll expenses. The loan was only 1.5. So it appears that we will be able to just use payroll to support the forgiveness, which makes it easier in terms of the application process. We won't have to send in leases or supplemental information or records, which the payroll company has nicely put into the format that we need for the forgiveness.
Okay. So what's your anticipated timing?
We anticipate doing it this week. The report I, I had, I had mentioned the 30th as a timeline. It's possible it could be sooner than that, but I think safely by end of month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So when we look at the overall profit and loss summary, May, and then looking forward to June, we're trending just slightly under budgeted revenues, but again, that's explained by just slightly under enrollment. We have gotten additional monies from grants. So we're tracking just about $23,000 under target. And then on the expense side, right now with the projections, I'm looking at maybe about $18,000 over in expenses with total net income projected around $150,000 compared to the 193 that we budgeted for. But I want to know, you know, because this is kind of my first time, I am pretty conservative in the June projections. Just waiting to shore things up, make sure all the final postings and accruals are done. So it is possible that that 150 would look more like 180 or 190 when everything is said after June is finalized.
Okay.
And that's not the most exciting report out.
And I'm sorry, I ended up missing the AFC call. But have you, this looks a little bit different from what we used to see. I don't, I don't know if it is or if I'm just misremembering. Like, have you sort of taken a look at the format of the reports and figured out, you know, what, what do you want to highlight? And whether there's something you want to do differently?
I have. I was able to spend some time with the reports. And I do think there may have been one schedule that was excluded and I've, I've seen some reports packaged differently month to month. And to your point, what I would like to do is to continue to work with Josh and Chris and also the board members for the information that's most relevant and pertinent to you. You know, I, every board has a different understanding, so I don't want to, you know, oversimplify it, but I don't want to, you know, be too high level. So I would like to kind of strike a balance because I do think, you know, particularly since we'll be starting out the year anew, the reporting for the first quarter will be a little bit different. Once we kind of get to mid-year, I expect things to level out again. You know, not too many unanticipated changes. And, and I know that COVID, you know, really threw a wrench in how, how the money, how it looked and what expenses, you know, were highlighted versus previous years.
I think you're also, Mario, referring just to the, the sort of notes page that CSBM would offer. And so I think Alex's report out kind of used the same format and sequence and kind of going down the list and kind of seeing her notes on, on yesterday's call. But I think it wasn't flashed here. So that might be what you're, you're seeing is different.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm not, I'm not at all wedded to what they, what they used to be doing. I, I actually think there's, there would be a benefit subject to what other people think. And we can take that offline to focusing more on the more significant items as opposed to a blow-by-blow of like, you know, we were up 200 there and down 800 there, which, whatever. So if I had two comments, one would be sort of focus on the significant stuff. And, and the second one would also be to the extent there are things that offset each other, right? Like your revenue that's dedicated to a certain kind of expense or whatever. It's always useful to present those together as opposed to sort of, and I'm, this is not about what you did today. It's just about years of past experience.
That's very helpful, just knowing.
To think about these things in tandem because like, if I have an extra revenue and an extra expense and they're, they're, you know, married sort of, then I, I don't, I, I don't have an impact from that. Right. So but again, we can, we can talk about this offline.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
And one other thing, I think calling out items that are, are more one-time, like some of the special funding that we're getting this year, so we can see sort of ongoing operations versus, you know, one-time cash inflow or outflow. I think that's helpful too.
Yeah.
And since we're piling on, I think distinguishing operating revenue and expense from contributions. Like if we're going to finance something with, from, from F O N B, I think it's, it's helpful to call that out because I think we, I, I in particular want to have a sense of like operationally, are we breaking even? Are we not? And sort of what are the other sources of funding that we have been using or need to think about using for future periods?
I think also, so just in debriefing on the AFC call yesterday, in addition to going through the May report, we also discussed a few expenses for 21, 22 that would be beyond the $20,000 threshold we have. And so one of those items is in the agenda tonight as an approval item, but isn't an urgent approval. We can move forward and just push it to the next month. That's the, the sort of CSBM agreement, supplemental agreement that they'd be putting forward in services for the year. So we talked about that at length during the AFC call yesterday. We can, we can go back to that during the next call too, if it makes sense. And then there are two or three other expenses, one being transportation and busing, which we've had in the past. One being the use of Josh Phillips as an executive coach, which you've also used in the past. And so these are reoccurring and we like to continue with them this year. There may have been one more that I'm not recalling right now. Chris or Alex, can you help me out?
We had the busing.
CSBM.
Josh Phillips, CSBM.
Is Ramapo expected to be over 20?
And then we've got, yeah, there, there may be one consultant who we use this year where we'd like to use them more so. They're quite good. And so that won't be something, we don't have an agreement or anything. We don't have an agreement kind of put forth of yet. It's in process. So that would be something you expect for next month.
Is this Josh stuff that is in the budget or not yet?
All is in the budget. We may reshuffle a little bit for the, the culture, staff development stuff, but it, it is in there. It may require an offset.
Okay.
And so I think that, that was it. Jeanette, anything else that's worth reporting out?
Nope, you got it.
So for the DFC committee, Sal and I were on a call on, was it yesterday too, Sal? Oh my gosh. Was it Friday? I don't even know now. I'm confused. In any case, I think what came up in that meeting is the following. So we just, we officially obtained the tax refunds of close to 150K. So that's now in process of coming to our, our hands. So that's one. And then we also discussed goals for 21, 22 with regard to development and goals for 21, 22 with regards to facilities. And so I think it was just Sal and I on the call recently, whenever it was. And so I think it makes sense to bring this back to the full DFC and then bring it to the board next meeting. Sal, anything else you had?
No, I was about covered it. I think it was last week.
Last week?
Yeah.
I guess we can move on to ECPC as well. That was Sal, myself, Trudy and Earl on a call last Tuesday. And similar in nature, we doubled back to some of the goals that we had put forth for this year and then updated them in draft form for the coming year. So what are the committee goals of the ECPC in 21, 22? And I think same, same process here, given that we're short tonight, people, let's kind of bring that out to the full board in August.
I think the other piece, Josh, for related to DFC, we talked about fundraising a bit and, and bringing that to the broader group, but it's probably better for next month's meeting also.
Yeah. And so next. So I think we can move on to SLC now and I'm going to share my screen. So I get to hang out with Jeanette quite a bit this week. We were together on two calls. So very efficient, small group meetings this week with regard to committees. But I think there were, there were maybe three items that we talked about during our committee call. One was just our results where we have results four-star from the fall to spring. And so a full year of kind of growth estimates for grades six through 12. So I want to run through those. Again, it was in the school leader report, but I do want to spend some time with it. We also talked in detail about college matriculation and acceptance. And so I'll throw a table your way there. We'll talk a bit about that. And then we also talked about the assessment calendar for 21, 22. Won't go into detail with the full board here. We'll present out an assessment schedule proper next month. But some early conversations there about the degree and frequency and regularity of assessments over the coming year. So there are two tables that you'll, you'll see in front of you in the school leader report or on my screen. You'll see one on my screen in this. You'll see one on my screen, and this is a snapshot. Let me step back for a moment. If you recall, STAR is an external exam. Kids take it three times a year. It's about a 30-minute sitting each time a student takes the exam, and it provides some kind of estimate of what a student is demonstrating reading-wise and math-wise over the course of the year. And so we're able to look at growth over the course of the year, grade six through 12, and then be able to compare that against different, different students across the country. So this is the first year we've, we've used it. So, so in looking at the table in front of you, you'll see average student growth percentiles, students' growth versus others who began at the same level they did as of the fall. Across the board, 612 across the bottom. And the green line toward the middle of the chart represents the 50th percentile. So one's sort of like growing at a rate that is exactly on par with the middle student within that starting point in reading or math moving forward. What we're looking at here is math. So headlines here are that average student growth across the board, 612, was somewhere between the 45th and 50th percentile. I think in a normal year, it's not something we're pleased with at all. I think given this year, it's something we can move forward with. And, and I think with, with, with math, the results were, were stronger with our students with disabilities versus our students with disabilities in reading. I think the reason for that is just that we, over the course of this year, found some good strategies teaching-wise toward working with kids and having them demonstrate in real time, in a moment in class, like what they were thinking and what they were putting forth for teachers. In reading, it was a bit more challenging to sort of work with students and teach them, particularly our struggling readers. The skills they need to sort of grow at a rate that is, in our minds, what we want is faster than the average student in school. So in general, our students, both in reading and math, grew at around the midpoint, around the 50th percentile or just lower. Not what we want, not what we aim for, but given the challenges this year, given the needs of students, et cetera, we take it and move forward with it and look to, look to, both this summer, provide additional help to our kids, as well as if we think about interventions for the coming year in reading specifically, double down and offer, offer more of those students that need it most. One of the analyses that I'm having our data person run that I'm interested in is parsing out this data in such a way that we're looking at a subset of our students who had subpar attendance, attendance below 80% and comparing that with the growth of our students who had attendance above 80%. I suspect there'll be some differences, but I'm interested in seeing that. If, for example, we see that for kids with high attendance, their average growth percentile was something above 50, okay, I, I feel better about that. If it's not, I'd want to look at data a bit more to understand who grew, who didn't grow, and then why or why not. So that's some of the, some of the additional work we'll be doing on the side to get a better understanding of this moving forward.
Is the point of this assessment squarely a growth one, or?
No, there's a, there's a proficiency level, too. And so you're able to sort of see, so if, you know, this is a year in which we didn't have state testing, so I'm sort of focusing on growth more so and, and, and focusing more time on that and less on proficiency. In years in which we also have state assessments, we would want to be able to sort of see, given the power of the tool and doing so, its predictability and giving us some sense of which students as of the winter or fall are on par to score a grade level on the state exams at the end of the year. And so that data is available with this, too. I have some of that data available. We didn't talk about it on, on, I guess, whatever I met with, with Jeanette.
SLC call.
But I, in general, and I think the takeaway for me was at the middle school, where I think we're able to get a clear sense of math versus the state or ELA versus STAR reading, the, the alignment is not that far. So we're somewhere around 30% of kids demonstrating proficiency in math and reading on this, on these, on these sort of assessments as of the winter and spring this year, which is in line with what we've seen in past years proficiency-wise on the math and ELA state exams. In the high school, it's different because you've got very concentrated, specific content exams in math, in ELA, in history, et cetera. So I think it's a good, this STAR measure offers a crude assessment of one's skill and growth over time at the high school, but it doesn't map onto Regents exams or AP exams as strongly. So I think what is good, though, and this, this relates to your, your question, is that we now have a year of this data in hand. It's a year of data where we experience remote learning at hand, but it's still better than no data at all. So I'm, I'm excited to sort of see how we fare and how we improve from one year to the next moving forward. So I think it was a good move to adopt this, and I look forward to continuing to use it in even more powerful ways in the coming year.
Who's the control group? Is it like New York State? Is it nationwide? Is it?
It's nationally-normed exam. I have some questions in, in detail about like, is it a sample comprised of current students and prior year students in creating some kind of like reference point, or is it only using this year? I suspect it's the latter, but there are some questions around comparison groups that I have, too. And as we get more familiar with the, the sort of technical aspects of, of this assessment tool, answers like that we'll, we'll have in hand.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, because given that it's, it's all we have for this year, I think. You know, nobody expects that overall this year is going to be not a great year, right? For, for proficiency and growth and all of that. I think, I don't know, I think I'd be interested in understanding how we're faring against the people we're usually comparing ourselves to, the city, the state, you know. And so maybe, maybe a little more, because I didn't, you know, I want to avoid the kind of Rite Awakening when we go back to the standard testing next year.
I think, um, we won't talk about like the assessment scheduling details tonight, but I think reading, for example, I think that's, that's obviously a very powerful skill to develop at a young age, moving on to high school. And this is one measure that we have for doing so. And so within reading, as we ramp up our reading interventions for the coming year and expand it, we'll use this tool as a baseline. So we'll have kids assess using this tool in the fall. For kids that don't demonstrate a certain level, who are perhaps a couple of years below where they should be in their reading skills in sixth grade, seventh grade, or eighth grade, we've got a finer tool that we'll use for assessing where they are and what specific kinds of tutelage and interventions they need, and then be able to sort of offer that more nuanced, personalized intervention for them. But this is meant to sort of just provide a who's where from like a, a sort of more crude kind of measure for us then to use to dive in and use more precise tools.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, this, this feels healthy in that way. I think one of the concerns we had coming in this year is that we didn't want to over-assess. Maybe this is a little different because there were no state exams, but in a typical year, we want to use this kind of tool alongside interim assessments, alongside sort of reading-specific assessments, alongside AP exams, Regents exams, alongside other things, and not have it crowd out precious learning time. So the sweet spot is like the right number of assessments to accurately inform where a student is at any point in time and then diagnose. And if you go beyond that, you're eating into, to time that could be spent in the actual teaching and learning. So I think the sweet spot is what we've identified for the coming year, which again, we'll go into detail in August. So I'm going to move us forward to the other deeper dive in the AFC call, which was just acceptances to college. This is interesting. It's, it's kind of a big, broad table of measures, but we haven't had two years of college matriculation data before, so it's worth spending a couple of minutes with. It's like, this is one of the endpoints that we want to, to assess our, our impact by. And so I think in general, these are percentages we're looking at here and the class of 2020 versus the class of 2021, and the percentage of students matriculating at a four-year college, a two-year college, going into a vocational program, going directly into the workforce, or unknown. It's, it's unclear exactly what plans the student has. And so as you compare the two, in the third column, I provided percent point differences. And because these are percentages, we're only talking about 68 students with the class of 2021 and 84 in the class of 2020, the differences aren't all that severe. There seems to be kind of a trend of four-year colleges for kids over the past two years being somewhere between 15 and 60% of our kids. I think as we have this data and compare that to our aspirations originally and where kids are now and what they're doing and how they're faring in college, this summer, I want to step back with our CCR team, our college and career readiness team, and say, hey, look, let's, let's just reassess and, and, and just establish for ourselves, what is a healthy, positive, ambitious target for us with regard to kids moving on to two-, four-year colleges, vocational programs, et cetera? So it feels, it feels good and empowering to have this sort of data now to drive our decisions moving forward. Let me pause there and see if there are any specific questions about this data now or some insights about this data now.
This is a silly question. I do not remember, and maybe I'm misreading this, but that the class this year was so much smaller than the class last year?
Yeah. Is the, is the question, how do I?
Yeah, no, is, is that right, that we, we only had 68 graduating class versus 84 last year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember the, the class years kind of went up and down and up and down, and we talked about smoothing them out, but decided not to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're, I think that there's a, there's a move to do that. And I think what's, what's, um, what can be stressful, but what is healthy stress in my mind is some of the back-and-forth better recruitment team Chris might have with our academic counseling team, who are then programming kids for classes and thinking about the number of students in each class and then what, what can make sense. And so from their perspective, there's always more stress if like we've got these deviations from one class to the next, and they'd like to see things smoothed out. On the recruiting side of things, we want to have close to 300 students that we serve each year. And given the way in which we grew and how much space we had in our first two years, et cetera, like, we're, we're, we're still working this out. So it's going to be something that continues to smooth it out each year gradually. It won't be a quick fix.
Okay, I, I just think, I mean, the one that sticks out to me is the, is the two-year enrollment that just went down by quite a bit, and some of it moved to four-year, but some of it did not. And so if you look at the number, you're at like 82 this year according to two or four.
Yeah, yeah.
Versus 90 last year. If you put in the vocational in there, it's 92 versus 86. That's probably not like statistically significant, given the.
Agreed, but I think, I'm glad you raised that. So the, the, the 22%, so, and I mentioned this to Jeanette during our call, a vast majority of those kids are going to one, two-year community college in the city that we feel pretty good about, like, we like the school. It's got me in community college, they do some good things for kids. They're fairly organized in supporting kids, offer probably more support than the average community college. And so in doing that, we've got a good connection directly with the school, so we can keep tabs on kids and support them when it's helpful to do so. We've got a direct connection with the administrators there to find out what's going well, what's not, getting information back. And so, and like our kids are able to kind of experience community college. I think for the most part, this is a good thing. It can be, can be negative sometimes if you're just with your friends and, and maybe not taking school seriously, but our kids do. And I think being with others makes them feel more confident when taking that big step to, to college. So it's an interesting insight in that, in that we're really kind of focused on one community college with this, this.
That's different from the prior year where more of them went to your college, it was more scattered, presumably?
It's heavier. We didn't have as many, as many students enrolling in this one community college. There were a few other schools we also had kids matriculating in. And I think, you know, with the, with the vocation and workforce numbers, I think with the workforce numbers, again, it's not like a really significant difference, but like, we're talking about maybe the fifth of our kids or even 10th of our seniors who were most vulnerable to not graduating and getting them like over the top to obtain that diploma, which really means significantly more doors open to them workforce-wise or perhaps in deciding to go to college someday. So, or a few more kids than the prior year, their belief is that they're happiest and going to be best suited to go and work for a while directly out of high school and then test the waters from there. And in some cases, that like, that is the best move right now. They're going to be most successful right now in that setting. And like, we're, we're happy to kind of just have them earn that diploma. And again, as, as sort of the research shows, make significantly more in their first years after being 18 than they were if they didn't earn that diploma. So a bit of a deep dive, I think this is really fascinating stuff. I think you can look at the other notes within the school leader report, but I, I talk a bit about the Sunnys and Cuties and many of our kids going to those schools, and we feel like those are good value colleges and take care of kids and have some really good programs for first-generation college-going kids. We also host the kids, probably a few more than the prior year, going to selective schools, too. So I'd listed out a couple of those. And so, yeah, that's the SLC report out, the two deep dives we did on the academic front. My sense from there, Mariam, is we, we push.
Well, I have your screen on my screen, so hold on. I have, I, I need to exit the full screen to go back to my agenda, sorry.
Mariam, you need two screens here.
I actually have a giant screen, one enormous one, so I need to. All right, so we can't approve anything, right?
Yeah. And so I think, you know, this is, we probably didn't have quorum. There probably have been two other cases that I recall where we had a quorum. But I think, is it, is it true that we produce minutes for the sessions and then just say that we, we didn't have quorum, but we met? Is that right?
Yeah.
And then we would approve those minutes in any case, next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. For folks who've been around, you know that the August meeting tends to be maybe the second busiest meeting. September's a close second, third, but after June, August is pretty busy with items for approval going into the academic year, so things like.
Plus, you're going to carry over all the stuff from this.
Yeah, yeah, so it's going to be kind of busy. So I'm going to have to do some, some cheerleading upfront to make sure that we're all, all present, who can be.
Did, did you, Josh, and we don't need to dwell on this, but, you know, did you talk to Jim after we had the executive committee meeting on the time?
Yeah, I have, on, on a couple of occasions. And so I'm going to reach out to him again, and I've CC'd him on some correspondence regarding horrible classroom stuff. So that's doing the works. And, um, yeah, I'm still meeting on him for, for any kind of like aspects of the negotiation that, that are beyond my, my pay grade. Yeah.
Okay, and then are you going to be sending out the conflict of interest statements, or are they in the package already?
They weren't. I, I guess in, in looking at not having quorum today and then when putting together materials yesterday, I just, knowing that we weren't going to have folks in the mix, I felt it better just to hold off on that till August, too.
All right, I mean, you can send them to people to do on their own time, right? We can talk about it, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I had imagined doing it live. Yeah. I, I, I had imagined doing it live in front of everyone, you know, having everyone submit because they can't, but making time. And then I think it's most efficient that way rather than individually chasing.
That's fine. Just send me mine ahead of time to make sure.
Right. Right. Okay. All right. So I think that's all for tonight.